Thank you. The touch. We will call the meeting to order. The roll call, please.
Trustee Devaux.
Here.
Trustee Sisbozak.
Here.
Trustee Hakes.
Here.
Trustee Williamson.
Here.
And trustee Law.
Here.
Thank you all. We will look at the approval of minutes from September, trusting everyone has had a chance to go over those. Any questions or changes? It's been moved to second.
I'll second.
You're second, Hakes. It's been moved to second by Hakes. Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of invoices.
Oh, I have to do that. Okay. Well, I tried to remember what's going on. There it is. Okay.
Hello, Mike. I move that the invoices dated September 22nd, 2020 through October 27th same year, and open purchase orders, as shown in the attached list, dated October 27th are hereby approved for payment.
Second.
All in favor of the approval of those invoices for October 2020?
Aye.
Aye. Consideration of the financial report.
Oh. Wait a minute. I do have a... I knew it. I couldn't find it earlier. If we could go back for a moment in regards to the minutes on the third page, under City Council on the bottom of page number 12, second sentence. The city ranks ninth place in COVID statistics and of the nine counties, Oceanside is the least wealthy. And I think it's the nine cities within the county is what it's meant.
I... Where is that?
It's the second sentence in B12.
12B. Thank you.
At the end of the sentence.
Of the nine counties, Oceanside is the least wealthy.
One instead of...
Yeah, she's in cities.
Yeah. That's what I thought. It made more sense that way. Thank you.
Nine cities.
Would that change then?
Okay. So then I move for approval with the correction of cities from counties.
I thought there were more cities than that.
Give me a second. Charlene.
Do we need to move for that amendment?
Yes, you do.
Please.
Second. Somebody second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you. Not that I'm a nut or anything.
All in favor of amendment? Thank you. We'll get on the same page in a moment.
Sure.
All right. We'll have the financial report, please.
Okay. Good afternoon. So if you look at item 1C, we will start with the department summary by program. This is for the month of September. So this is three months, the first quarter. And the target would be 25%. We're at 20%. You can see there the savings or the unspent amounts and percentages there along the side. And the bulk of that savings at this time is salary savings due to vacancies and then staff that was furloughed for the months of July, August, and half of September. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Okay. So then the next page is the library books and materials budget. And I'm hoping that you noticed that the library fund total there increased to $360,000. We received $140,000, an augment to the book budget through the carryforward process. And so that puts us back at a spending level that we were at last year, which will greatly help us. You'll notice that we've put quite a bit of money into eBooks, both for children's and adults. And also, we're able to then increase the database software part of the budget to help with the way that people are currently using the library in the area of e-resources and eBooks.
Wonderful.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there resources? I mean, I go to video and DVD, but I know there's... The library offers other ways to stream films. Is there a large Asian film category or?
So there is. Through the Hoopla platform, there is the ability to check out movies or stream movies.
And you can search for, say, Korean or Chinese movies?
You should just be able to, you know, search by title, I think is the easiest way to do it.
If you don't know the title is...
If you don't know the title, I think... I'm not positive about a subject.
Okay. I can look into it myself. Yeah.
There would be staff at the second floor customer service desk that would be able to help you with that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? I will move on. Consideration of the... Is it the muslin materials statistical report? 1D.
Okay. So if we can just start there. You have your cover sheet that just kind of breaks things out into bigger chunks. What I was going to draw attention to is on the second page there, just at the bottom. It's hard to do a year-to-year comparison right now, given the fact that, you know, we're not as open as much as we were last year at this time. But I was curious about looking at our overall grand total for the month. It's about half of what it was last year at this time. So it's actually... It's 48% less. And it really does correlate with our decrease in hours. We're open 48% less. So if you're... Interesting. Yeah. I wasn't expecting it to be so, like, completely right on. But so really, you know, in that regard, I didn't feel too bad about it. But as you can see, most of our customers are using self-check, very little interaction or transactions happening at the customer service desks. Delivery continues to be strong. And the LinkPlus numbers, both the borrowing and the loaning piece of that are starting to get back up to where they were, which was, you know, we were doing very well in that regard when things kind of came to a screeching halt. So it's nice to see that that borrowing and that lending has... is slowly working its way back up. So those were the things that I had planned to bring to your attention today with regards to the statistics. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them or give an opinion.
It's interesting to see the deliveries are still quite...
Yeah, and that's great.
Any other areas to comment or questions?
I'm still getting a lot of telephone calls thanking us for the delivery.
Can we take these off?
Call and tell you. It is so good that they're still very pleased.
Could you move your microphone over towards you? Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
It helps. Yeah.
Thanks a lot. All right. And we have the statistical... Program statistical report.
So that's, yes, item 1E. All of the programming that you see listed there has all taken place via Zoom. So our book clubs have continued, toddler storytime. Some of the storytimes have moved to a YouTube platform as well. So we're offering, you know, several different ways. But, you know, I mean, the numbers are decent with all things considered. So I didn't have anything else that I was going to share.
I have a question.
Yes.
On page two. Visitors users by door count? Look what Mission Branch says. That can't be right.
Wait a minute. Where are we?
So that was Mission Branch door count for the month of September. We had some technology issues, so we don't have a Civic Center door count.
Oh, because that didn't make any sense at all.
So we're back on... I'm sorry.
So in the month of September, since we reopened, since the 14th of September through the end of September, they've had 3,239 visitors.
And Mission Branch?
Mm-hmm. Good.
Wow.
You have to realize that, you know, that's like maybe three weeks. Can only allow 12 people in the building at a time.
Jeez.
So usually, that's up 19,000, 20,000. And we're also not open past 5:00. I mean, you have to take all... Everything into consideration.
I thought it was really high.
Oh, okay. Well...
I was surprised. Thank you.
It would have been... I wish that we had Civic Center numbers so that we could have made a little bit of a comparison. But there was something happened with the software or the counter, so... Okay. Anyway.
All right. Sorry. Didn't realize we had gone backwards. 1E. Consideration of the program statistical report. I think you had started to comment on.
I have a comment.
Okay.
We see the Okinawa drumming performance for children had 120 people attend. Where did you hold that?
Zoom. It was on... It was Zoom. Yes.
Oh, I missed that.
I went back and looked. I had the same... What? How did they do that? Oh, yeah. Zoom.
It was great.
Yes.
Wonderful. And I'm sure the children all knew how to use Zoom much better than we do. Oh, yes. Yep.
Did you say something about the conversation club? The adult conversation? Is that... Where is that held? How is it held, I mean? On Zoom?
That is held via Zoom. And that is a product of the Reed's Learning Center. Chelsea meets with those learners in a Zoom environment. And they just have... Talk and have conversations to help with...
Anything.
Doing better with your vocabulary or, you know, whatever it is that your need is as a learner. And so she holds that, I think, once a month.
So that is with the Learning Center?
Once a week, yes. But it is the Learning Center, yes.
Okay. Good. I'm interested in that. Civitan had their luncheon. What is CLLS? COVID Diaries.
Okay. So CLLS is the California Library Literacy Services. And they have developed a project called the COVID Diaries, giving people an opportunity to write about their experiences during this time of COVID. And Chelsea and the Reed's Learning Center, again, have been involved in that. And this was an online program that she intended. In fact, I think that she was part of the creation of this project. And so that's her participation in that project. And then the number of people... And that would not just be Oceanside residents, but anyone within the state of California that wanted to participate in that.
No, that's great. And it's not the same as the Oceanside connection? That, remember, we were doing Oceanside to Oceanside? Oceanside here versus...
Correct. No, it's different.
That's wonderful. Wonderful. Okay. All right. Any other comments?
Not for me.
I know it's difficult considering where we were at one point, looking at these numbers up to a total of 2,000, you know, plus. We'll get there. We'll be back. We'll be back. I just had to say that to keep it real. All right. Public comment? Wow. None that we know of? Update on COVID-19 impacts and reopening strategies.
So in the last couple of months, those have been two different items. I decided to kind of mash it together today and make it one item. And then I'm not sure, moving forward, we probably... I could just move this to, you know, kind of an update during the director's report. So I will say that this would be the final time that this is old business. But so I'll just share with you. We continue to be in stage one of our reopening plan. So providing grab-and-go services Monday through Friday from 10 to 5. We have been able to increase the occupancy at the Mission Branch from 12 at a time to 15. And we also, based on how much the computers were being used or not being used, were able to increase that computer use time to an hour. That has greatly helped our customers that have needed to use the computers. And we have a plan in place that if we enter into a situation where a line forms, we can... We are able to add a computer, both at Civic and Mission Branch, and maintain the social distancing. And so Sam and staff have the okay that if that happens immediately, they can deploy that extra computer. So that's in place. We'll probably just stay where we are here with stage one, especially as long as we remain or while we're in the red tier. I think we would need to move down to orange, I think, is next. We would need to move there to make any consideration for, you know, bringing in some seating or other things like that. I was able, a couple of weeks ago, to sit in on the county Wednesday call. And the director from the San Diego County Library, he shared the efforts that the San Diego County Library system is making. And very much what we're doing is in line with that or in some ways kind of exceeding what they're able to do. They're open for in-person service on Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and doing a curbside on Monday and Friday. They close for an hour in the middle of the day for a cleaning. We're cleaning every two hours, thanks to the help of some other city staff. I feel that our customers are thankful for what we're doing. They've been very conscientious about wearing their face coverings and understanding about the not being able to, you know, come in and sit and enjoy the library all day, which is a hard thing to not provide. But we're also trying to, you know, meet as many needs as we can, given this situation. So I'm happy with where we are, and we will just remain there. We do review every week as a management team. You know, could we add something? How do you think it's going? And it's going very well. I think at last month's meeting, I mentioned that we were able to get a short trial free from a vendor for a product called Coursera. And I put a couple of charts in your file in your packet there. Just Chelsea has led the charge on this through the Reed's Learning Center. And what we have discovered, and then I'll just give some meaning to the two pieces of paper I gave you. But there is a need. And because this was offered as a free trial, it gave us an opportunity to really look at the product. How we kind of launched this was through some press releases and social media. We got the word out. We invited people to contact us if they were interested. We had 115 people respond with interest. Then they were sent an email link for them to register. So of those 115, 88 people did join. And then 71 of those people actually enrolled and started taking some classes. It's a great product with some really good tracking options. So we know that 27.4% of the people that enrolled were in the ages of 20 to 29. We know that 67% of them were women. We know that 62% of them took some of the courses to try to get a better job or get a job in general. And 58% of them were looking to obtain some kind of license or certificate. And what was the other one? There was one there about... There was... There's a percentage that told us that people that were actually either had lost their job or were furloughed were drawn towards this to help them. So the first graph that I gave you there just showed that there really were new users almost every week and then consistent or existing learners. So the people that did enroll took advantage of it and continued to take advantage of it. And then that second sheet just showed you the top 15 courses that people were enrolled in. So it's been a great trial product to use. I don't know, moving forward, if we're going to be able to keep it. My understanding is it's rather spendy. But the vendor does want to come and meet with me and make his pitch. So I would like to at least listen to him. I think I owe them that, considering the fact that they made this available to us, so...
Is there any credits that are transferable with this to, say, colleges or any other way so that they get credit for it in a field that they're trying to improve in?
I don't know the answer to that. But I can ask that question, and that would be a good question for the vendor.
Could you go back to... You said, what percentage, again, are those who enrolled and took any of the courses were between 21 and 29?
27.4%.
Okay.
The piece that I was looking at. Of the... We had of the 102 that actually filled out the demographic piece of it, 57.8 were not working or out of work. 13 were furloughed. And 24% of them were working part-time.
Do you know if any other... What other users there are of this? You have any sense of that?
What? I'm sorry.
Any other users of this Coursera? The people that use it. Do you know who else is using this? How popular it is yet or anything?
I don't know what other... I don't know what other libraries...
Libraries specifically or...
I'm pretty sure. Or like, you know, learning centers, that type of thing.
Good.
I have a question. If there isn't college transfer credit for this, which I don't... Probably not. But if they provided a certificate or something that shows that they did take a course such as this, you can put that on a resume as well to show your breadth of knowledge, so...
I just feel that, you know, if there is a way, we ought to give them a way to prove credit.
Yeah. It is not necessarily credit.
Sometimes is going to be university or educational institution choice. And especially if it's an institution that is providing a way, especially for adult learners to finish a degree, then sometimes they do take all of that certification or work experience into account when trying to, you know, meet credit need.
Yeah. And also, depending on, you know, what the screening criteria will be in those various... But even just the motivation of someone to be doing that, you know, and trying to better their standing. So, great. Be interesting to hear more about it. I look forward to that.
I have other classes from the great courses. And they're... It's really neat. Some of the professors are kind of boring, but the one on the plague has so many... I mean, it's just like today, what we're dealing with, really. So just to increase information and learn.
Okay. Yes. All right. Item four. Coordination of the first quarter goals. Update.
Packet, you have the report that I turned in to the city manager's office that then goes to the city council to keep them updated on how we are progressing through our annual goals. So the timeframe for this was for the month of July, August, and September. And there have been, you know, other things... More has happened since I turned this in. And I would... I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have with regards to this report.
Sherry, if I could ask, what do the Xs mean? You know, for example, under library number one, there's two blanks in one and two. And there's Xs in three, four, and five. Just help me to understand the coding.
So if you look up above where it says city council strategic goals?
Yes.
The Xs there in box three, four, and five means that this...
Represent those three goals?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So they're a positive, not a negative?
It is a positive, yes.
Yeah. And just... I would just say, for the purposes of bill, to know, yeah, that these are, again, city council goals. And we agreed, I think, two years ago, maybe, that we would look at the things that we're doing that actually connect with their goals.
Yes.
But not the same as our strategic plan.
Makes sense. Thank you.
I think the fact you finished any of them was incredible. I said I felt... I felt the fact that we finished any of them was incredible, considering what else they had to do. I'm very impressed with it.
Particularly love that vision statement right up there. Number one. All right. Wow. It's a lot there. It's a lot there. All right. Sorry. Number five. Review of the library organization.
Some lengthy reading.
Yes. I just figured you didn't have anything else to do, so...
Thank you.
You're so helpful.
And I'm hoping that the cover sheet for each section was helpful to just help... Kind of help you get through it. So this, you know, this... Keeping the policy manual up to date, it's either crazy or a labor of love. There's just the two choices. And... But it is important. And we do use it. And it does keep it in front of us. And I think that it's very beneficial. And this every, you know, two-year review, I think we've finally found our stride with it. So the plan would be that you would... The past practice has been that you review each section or, as I'm bringing you, three sections today because we're... section, or as I'm bringing you three sections today because we're trying to catch up. So we would, you would approve the changes that we've brought before you today and then you would do a final approval of the entire document in February.
Okay.
So if you have any questions or if you have anything that needs clarification, let me know.
Yeah, I do.
I have a question on page one, under the first section, organization.
Okay.
And I see that there's been change, it's referred to throughout. So, so there's like a change from the literacy center to the learning center. Can you just talk a little bit about that?
Yes. So.
In terms of title?
Yes. So literacy implies that you, you can't read or you need help reading. A learning center allows us to be a little broader so that you might be able, we could help you with some math or whatever your needs are. And Chelsea has really been the driving force behind that, a lot with her skills and her talents that, that she has brought to the organization. And so we have embraced that idea of calling it a learning center so that it is not something that people may feel like, well, no, I don't need help with reading, but I could improve in another area. So that has been the, the thought behind it and a lot of time has been spent thinking about it.
Good, good. I'm just interested to see it, rather happy to see it and wanted to make sure that we heard it.
I have a question on that. So the learning center, the program that you just spoke about, is that being coordinated through the learning center, the Coursera?
Yes.
Okay. So then Sam used to give computer classes and various things right in the library. There were different classes that were offered. Will that be taken over by the learning center then?
Not necessarily. While they may do a computer class, it might be something that would be geared more towards the learners that they're working with.
Okay. All right.
This came about also as we've embraced family literacy.
Yes.
And gotten that second grant.
I had a feeling that that was, I wouldn't say the driving force, but that was somewhat behind that.
Yes.
Yeah. And I would hope that there will still be an opportunity for courses to be offered actually from the staff, you know, going forward as well.
CJ and I were just talking about that today. So we need to be, you know, we need to be back in a place where we can do some more expanded in-person service and be back in a, in a learning center environment, so.
And you all have so, become so adept at all of these pivoting in terms of these different virtual learning and online, you all are so equipped with it. So it'd be helpful to help the rest of the community.
Right, yeah.
I just held one of my final tests for my classes at the Veterans Association of North County and they had a conference room that definitely was six feet between, I think I had five students there able to take the test. So we just rented that facility for doing that. So, yeah, it was nice to see my students in person.
Right, yes. Was it you, Charlene, or Adrienne that had a question?
I was just wishing to make an agreement with a change instead of literacy, of learning because some of our people are quite literate in another language.
Yes.
And they come to us because they aren't literate in English.
Yeah.
And so I think this is a much more exact term and I really like it.
You're right. I will share that with them.
Because the opposite of literate is illiterate. And so we've known, we've known that that's what the concern is, yeah. It has a stigmatization to it.
Yes.
Then I have a question on page eight.
Before eight.
I had one on two.
Oh, okay. You're first.
I just wondered on the racial equity statement, it's, there was a verb, I guess it is, on the last sentence, the last part of the sentence on the first paragraph. The library envisions a community where all are welcome and enjoy a sense of well-being. And I wondered if, I didn't like the word "are" because I didn't think you could measure it and wondered if "feel" would be better and I'm not attached to either one.
Feel, wait a minute, who, where's the feel?
Where, it's not there.
No, where would it be? I'm sorry.
It would be, the library envisions a community where all feel welcome and enjoy a sense of well-being. Right now it just says we're all "are welcome." "Are" is what we're doing and "feel" would be what they would feel.
But that shows a commitment from staff, right? If you have "are," that, that's where the impetus for that feeling should be coming from. But if they feel welcome, then that's the impetus for the people enjoying the services. So if, it seems that if this is from the organization, this is what they're striving for with the, that we are promoting this. I, I don't know. Because it could go both ways. I like your question.
I'm not attached to either one, but.
Okay.
The only thing I would say is I'm not sure that one is any more measurable than the other.
Probably.
You know, in terms of, I think.
I don't know how you'd measure.
So I, I'm comfortable with "are."
Okay.
But.
My thought would be that this is word for word what we adopted, correct?
Yes.
So do we have to go back to our adoption process?
Correct.
If we're going to change any part of this?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's coming up finally, but yeah.
So this, so this racial equity statement has already, as it is written, has been approved by you.
Yeah.
And we are now adding it to our policy manual.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
So you said page eight, Charlene?
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Under general and one, it's, on the first line, it's not correct. Read it and you'll see it doesn't work.
Did you say number eight?
Page eight.
There is, I don't have anything on mine. My page eight is blank, so.
I have nothing on it.
My page eight is blank.
So is mine.
Yeah.
Oh, well.
There's, there's two page eights, so are we still?
This is the last one. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm toward the end.
Well, then let's wait, I'll let you take control of the meeting again, Miss.
I'm sorry. If you don't mind, we'll go back to where we were under the first section. And I would like to look at page four.
Yes.
Under general service policies.
Okay.
It's a long, in that very first paragraph, that very last sentence is long, but I see that physical and mental disabilities was deleted. Is that because that is separately addressed now elsewhere?
So, let me.
So the service will not be denied or abridged because of an individual's, and then physical or mental disability was deleted?
Deleted because it's, if you look up, so first of all, everything is in alphabetical order.
Yes.
So then actual or perceived age, color, disability. That, so that covers.
All?
Physical or mental.
Okay.
Where's this? Let me see this.
I just didn't read it.
Okay.
That it included all, so.
Anything that's been striked, struck out or changed is all based on research that Brad did. And this would be, I think I said that he went and looked at the fair housing and some other, some other county or state sites. And this language, yeah, the state's fair employment and housing and the attorney general site. So this is all in compliance with that.
We know that that didn't say, or any, like color, any disability.
Correct.
Any was not there. I mean, in terms of what he looked at. That's what I'm, I'm just making sure that it's clear.
The way that he's written it is the way that it was written in those other sites.
All right.
My question is on the two, use of national origin twice, ones in red and ones in black.
So then that's a mistake on my part for not, I shouldn't have added that national, the one that's in red.
Okay.
Because it was already there.
Thank you. I'd let the rest of it go.
That was operator error or typist error.
Operator?
No, it was computer, the computer did it.
Okay.
Yeah, you'd never know.
Going forward, anything else in this section?
I have nothing on, that's all I had on four. I don't have anything on five or six or seven.
Okay, so this section is.
And I don't have eight.
Number one, we are done.
She's.
I'm sorry.
She says firmly.
Pardon me?
All right.
All right. So the next section.
Is there, is there a page eight?
No. The next, the next, the next section is biennial policy review. Section three for mobile libraries.
Right, okay. I didn't.
Any?
I didn't have anything on this one.
I didn't have anything on three.
The only thing I saw, just a little typo or thing, up at the very beginning, the geographical doesn't need to be capitalized. I guess you would see that.
Thank you. I didn't see that.
Okay, it's all right.
Where was, I can't hear you.
No, it's fine. It's just a little minor typo.
Oh, geographical, okay.
Geographical, yes.
Anything else?
Working with a group of English teachers here?
Yes. How did you guess?
No.
Preachers.
Yes.
Both and both.
Done that.
Not have said anything, but then you said there was a little glitch before on something. So I said, okay. Otherwise, this is good. I thought, all right, the next section, review, section five, operations.
It was really fine print.
I know.
It was.
I know. I apologize for that. I tried to make it larger, but.
I just didn't have anything better to do, so I didn't read it.
Well, as the more you start making the edits, you know, it gets smaller and smaller.
Yes, yes.
That's the thing, instead of giving you more pages.
Okay.
All right.
I don't have anything on the first five pages.
I don't think I have anything until, oh, oh, yes, on page eight.
Wait a minute, I have something on six that I had a question on.
Page six, all right.
Stones.
Tombstone is the little money machine that is connected to the printers.
Is that explained somewhere?
Huh?
Is that explained somewhere in this? I have, I'm assuming there's an assumption that you know, everybody that knows, is reading this knows what they are.
That would be correct. This, this section, the bulk of the people that would be using this section five is library staff.
Yeah. I was going to Tombstone, Arizona and going, how did that get in there?
No, I thought we, first we shoot the librarian and then we got.
Thank you.
I would expect that you'd want to question any one of them that may want the combination or the access to that box.
Not really. I don't want the responsibility at this point.
We want to know what was really behind your question. All right, on page eight.
The first line, first line in page eight under general one isn't correct. Look at it, it doesn't.
Well, say what it is. What, what is it?
Receive and use of donations. That's, yeah, you're right, Charlie.
Receive.
Yeah.
May receive donations. No of, oh, for, may receive and use of, okay. Correction needed. Ready?
Okay.
Okay. And then you had a question, Alma?
Yes. On the bottom, I would just like to say, in terms of the very last sentence, all other art-related donations should be referred to the arts commission staff liaison. I think that should be where it ends. In other places, we haven't referred to library director by name. And if, you wouldn't want to have to change all of this if CJ, as much as I love her, should leave or not be here. Okay?
Oh, I had a point of interest question.
And then, is that more?
It's on page eight in that you talk about book donations. And I don't think I've ever delivered, donated a book that got into circulation, so I was wondering how many are put into circulation?
How many what?
How many books that are, land on the, by the back door?
Oh.
End up in circulation? Or do they just all go to the?
No, some of them go into circulation.
No. I don't know the exact number. I do know that when we were accepting donations, that Gail and the acquisitions staff had a plan in place that, you know, we're looking only to add things from the current year or just past previous year, so last two years type of thing. And then that they had a list of books that had like large hold lists. So Gail and staff both had kind of their list that they were always watching. And so from time to time, you know, depending on who was donating and what they were donating, then things were definitely added.
Thank you.
Okay.
And sometimes they just need them to fill out like, well, when we used to have sets of stuff that are now on computer, but if something was missing.
Right. There is a form that still gets filled out for some donations of books, right?
There is a form that we make available to the donor, acknowledging the fact that they made a donation. The exact process of if we add it or not, I believe there's some information in the collection development policy, which you'll be seeing next month.
Oh, okay. I wondered about that. All right.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Note, collection policy.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
No.
I move approval.
Second.
All right, so we approving this, but we're going to come back and be approving all of it again, right? In totality?
Yeah.
All right, so we move, excuse me. Yes.
Madam Chair, may I ask?
Yes.
One question.
Please.
So, can't remember which page it was on, but I didn't want to disrupt your conversation and I hardly ever do, but in, on this page two that you were talking about, the last line says, "Building workforce which across the breadth and depth of job classifications reflects its community." Does there, how do you mix qualifications in there? I mean, is that just in the job descriptions or, I don't know if that's, I understand probably most anybody, diversification and the need to try to do it, but it always has to be the qualified people.
Yes.
So is that part of what is already in place in the job descriptions?
Not necessarily. And in fact, this, this leads in to part of some of our objectives in the strategic plan that we'll be talking about in a minute. In, in a conversation that I've had with some staff and with the city manager this morning, I would love to see the, a diversified. a diversified staff and a staff that represents our community. I still want librarians to have master's degrees.
Oh, yeah.
So how do we get there? That's what we have to work on.
I'm good.
And whether it's through internships, whatever, whatever, whatever the process is, I, I don't want us to lose the specifications or the specifics of, of our, of our profession in the process.
Yeah, but that will vary depending on the staff person, the level of staff. So you wouldn't have the qualifications for all of them.
And you know, it could be something as simple or as complicated as, I mean, I, I started at the library over 30 years ago as a library tech. So maybe you've hired a person of color or as a tech, and you, and as you're working with them, you see, well, they don't have their bachelor's degrees, they go back to school and they get that degree, and then you mentor them through a library and position.
Like we have some of our staff.
There's many of us that didn't have bachelors and masters when we started, and we do now, because we've created a learning environment.
Right.
So, you know, that, that's in place already. It can be bolstered, and there's, you know, there's, there's lots of other things that we can do, and that's why we've put it in the strategic plan, so we can actually put some effort into it. Great question.
I just, I'm just felt that it has to be part of the process going forward.
Yes.
I mean, I'm, I'm probably the least qualified person of anybody ever to serve on the city council, but I get my, I get my comeuppance every four years. So, thank you.
I have something to add. I, I think that in the volunteer, also, that's a place that you can focus on diversity and attracting volunteers for specific things. You know, I, I'm still back on having, a person with autism would possibly be a great book cleaner, sorting books, shelving books, and those are volunteer positions that could increase the diversity in the library.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, diversity and inclusion. We go to that. Good work to be done. Very good.
Okay, so this does need to be approved, and I don't remember if you were at the motion in second.
A motion to move, and we have a second.
Do we have a motion in a second?
I thought you said.
Yeah, we have it.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so it's been...
Yeah, I have that Charlene made the motion and Paula seconded it.
Right.
And you get to say all in favor?
I will. Okay. My turn.
Okay. I thought it was just the opposite. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
I am a hurrier, we might have to do it again.
I'm sorry? What's that?
She hurried to say it, so we didn't have to do it again.
All right, wow, that was a lot. Okay. Number six, please, a draft, a strategic plan. And the strategic plan in terms of 2021 to 2023, would you like to say the years for that? Is it the program or calendar year?
This would be calendar year.
Thank you, just for clarification. Thank you.
So, bringing before you today is a draft of the strategic plan. The senior management team has been meeting, following pretty strictly to the timeline that we have shared with you and that you approved at the, I believe it was the August meeting. I did meet...
Senior staff, do you mean CJ Brad and yourself, or?
CJ Brad, myself, Monica, Marie, and Sam make up the senior management team. I did meet with the city manager and the assistant city manager this morning and reviewed this with them, and wanted to answer any questions that they had or any concerns that they have. And it, it was a good meeting. It went really well.
Good.
So as, as you can see there in the document, we've come up with four major themes, and then we have come up with a goal and then objectives for each one of those themes. If, if you boiled it down into one word for each theme, you would see that it's about access, it's about equity, it's about expansion, and it's about how we're delivering or delivery of our services. And that's both our books and our programming. So, moving forward, the plan is that all of our current activities and anything that was listed in previous strategic plans would be considered core services, and we would be speaking to that in our introduction. So what you're just seeing here is, it's, it's not the completed plan, it's just, it's bringing you the themes and the goal and the objectives, because if you're not good with what's on these two pages, then we need to go back to the drawing board with that. And then we would, as we have in the past, create annual action plans to actually get the work done. So just as a reminder and to bring Bill into the loop, in 2012 and 20, the end of 2012, we put together a community-focused group and did three large visioning meetings with that group that was facilitated by Alma, Cisco Smith. It's how we hooked her into service. And it, it was a great experience. It really was. And we brought these community partners together to give us a 10-year vision for Oceanside, not just for the library, but a 10-year vision for Oceanside. And then we turned the focus towards then what could the library do to help with that vision. So that first plan that we put together had six very broad goals with many objectives and many action steps. I feel like when we first looked at that, it was like, how are we ever going to do this? And we did it. And a big piece of that included spending some time looking at our core competencies. What did we as a staff need to change, do, or learn to be able to make this plan work? And so we spent a lot of time on that as well, and it really was to our benefit to do that. Then in 20, so that took us, through 2016, took us some time to kind of finish that up, also then to put together our update that we're currently living in right now, which is dated 2017, 2020. And that's where, as we started that plan, we really started looking at, what are our core services? What have we, what is it that we're doing that we want to continue to do? What is our foundational work? And so that was all listed out, and then we used our mission statement to engage, inform, connect, and inspire, and turned those into action words to come up with our goals. And again, four goals, many objectives, many actions, and an annual action plan, and we have worked through that plan. So we have been very successful with this, this format. So now we're at, we're coming to the end of, in 2023 would be the end of that 10-year vision. And so these themes, these four themes of what has, is what has bubbled up to the top, and the work that we feel that we need to be accomplishing in the next three years. And really, it's, some of it, it's moving us in a, in a, in a direction. And it's setting us up then for what would happen in the 10 years beyond this. So it's, some of this, as we do this work, it's like this, we do this work, and then it's the start.
For the future.
Mm-hmm, of the future.
That's right.
And so I, you know, I feel very good about that. I feel very good about the CREEA work being part of this. I feel that it's important that the facilities piece of it, the expansion piece of it be part of that. I'm not saying that at the end of three years, you know, we're going to build or anything like that, but at least we would know what we, what we need, because it's been a very long time since we have updated any kind of facilities plan or anything like that. So that was kind of, that was, a lot of our discussion has been around those, those topics. So I'm happy to, you guys all know how to read, so I don't feel like I need to go line by line with you. I'm, I'm happy, Alma, to facilitate this in whatever way you want the discussion to go.
Well, I think we can handle it the same way we've handled the other prior, and that is, was before us, was before us to read, is first thing, and, and to take, and try to take some of it in. And so I think the first thing is if any questions or areas for discussion, that's what we should have, and if you can facilitate that discussion, that's fine. For me, so I'll open it up. I have a question, and it's really not very, it's probably very elementary for you. So I understand what a hub is, I think, pretty sure, but I don't know what a hub space is. I mean, that sounds very, like you're designating it, it sounds like artificial intelligence for the future. So I want to know, what is that?
Okay. So we have received a grant through the state library to create an early learning hub, which would be a place, yes, it would be a physical space within the library, it would be in the Civic Center Library, where we could bring in a dental hygienist, for example, to do teeth screenings for the kids. What, one of the things that we have been doing for the last several years, and especially in the kinder readiness area, is that as the kids are learning how to cut and glue and use glitter, their parents have been in another area, learning how to get them registered for kindergarten, or learn what are the things that they need to know about kindergarten type of thing. So this would create a programmable space within the library where some of these activities could happen. So for example, kinder readiness or this parent training conversation could be happening in the hub, while the children's story corner in the craft room is either being used for the glue and glitter cut program, or another program is happening. So we've been given money to hire a librarian to manage this project and to also physically create the space.
That's great.
Awesome. That's good.
Wonderful.
But this would only be at the Civic Center, not at the branch?
So the, the physical space right now, in the next 12 months, would be at the Civic Center Library. The plan would be that some pieces of that could actually be a show that could go on the road, that we could take, either take out to the branch, or take, say, to a, to a resource center, or a recreation center, or a pop-up program in the park, anything, you know, kind of take it out where the community is at. But it would start by building this hub and getting all the programming in place at the Civic Center Library.
Wonderful.
Alma, if I could ask a question here, since I'm probably on the steepest learning curve, tell me if you can, Sherry, in terms of, is, this appears to be a change in format. You're going with themes instead of, as, you know, as I look at the 2017 to 2020, we had vision, mission, guiding principles, and then you had sections for each of the four for engage, inform, connect, and inspire. Is this an intentional change to themes from a format that you, we've used before, or is, are they connected in some way that I'm not seeing?
So adding and calling something a theme is, is a little different than what we've done in the past. We're not, we're not tied to any, you know, kind of like structured format.
Sure.
It's just that these seem to be the themes that, I mean, they, they're themes, and they, and it's what bubbled up. And so that, that's the choice that we made to, to use that format.
Instead of the format that we've used in the last three years, I understand.
And it, and actually, if you had the previous strategic plan to look at, this one that you have right now looks different than that one did.
Okay.
So.
Jack, did you have a question?
No.
Oh.
So if I'm looking at a graphic organizer or umbrella or something, your four themes are going to be your, your big picture, and then it's under those four themes that you're going to build the plan?
Yes.
Got it.
Sorry, those four themes are going to be under what?
So the first thing, so the, we would have our, we have our four themes.
Yes.
And then under each theme, there is a goal.
Yes, I see that.
And then we have our, our three objectives.
Right.
And then from those objectives, we would create our action plan.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, but to Bill's point, I, when I read through these, I went back to the mission as well, the mission statement, which is those four areas, and I was trying to see how they're connected with the mission statement, which I think we should continue to do. I think so, I'm just kind of tagging on to that point. So I haven't, I, I, this is a draft, and I'm still, I'm reading it still as a draft.
Yes.
So I think that I like to, I'm still digesting it myself, too. And I think if we approve where we are now, that doesn't mean that we still couldn't have some recommendations for any potential shifts, not shifts, but changes or considerations, right?
Yes, the, the plan at this point was to bring something more formalized, final to you in November, but if, if you are not ready for that, then I'm, I'm looking for your recommendations. You know, we, we looked at the idea of still, okay, our, our mission has not changed, and it's not going to change.
Right.
And I think the thing that we were looking towards was that in each one of these themes, are we engaging? Are we connecting?
Exactly.
Are we informing? Are we inspiring?
And that was the question I was asking myself.
And if that's the case, in which it seems like it should and it would be, that, that our mission, our mission's not changed, like I said. And so any of our actions, really, as we put them together, would continue to meet the mission.
Should be consistent with that.
But what we didn't want to do was force these themes or, or pigeonhole them into it's got to fit in this, in this category. I think, I think if we're, we're vested in our mission, we have been for the past six and a half, almost seven years, and I think that as we, as we write our actions, as we refine our objectives, that our mission is going to continue to shine through, because it's just, it's just ingrained in us now.
I had, oh, are you through?
I had one question I was going to ask, and it's really not so much in, in line with approval or not, it's just, I was curious if you can or have any information on the status of El Corazon, as I see, expansion of library space.
So I do not have any, any... So I do not have, um, any, any new news on that. I think that the key piece of the expansion there is, is that facilities master plan, and hiring a consultant to help us do that, to do that work. And then, it, things like that are all about the ability to pay for it.
Of course.
Yeah.
But my, but I want to know, is it still on anybody's lips? Is anybody?
My understanding is that when the, the El Corazon plan was approved, there is a blob of land set aside for a library, and that has not changed.
It's not part of the soccer damn thing. That brings up what I was trying to ask. Because every time we do this, do we have specific monies set aside that are ongoing, like we did for, in case the bookmobile needed to be replaced? You know, we had that one going. Do we have one for facilities like El Corazon?
No.
I would like to see if, if we have those monies where we are in, at the November meeting, if you could bring where we are financially on those types of items.
There is, there is no money designated towards building
Right.
at El Corazon. It would, that would-
Or anyplace else, that was my point.
Correct. Correct.
Because when we went out, now I've completely lost the park.
Oh, John Landis.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
We thought maybe there was some money out there. Now there's no money at all for that?
Well, I think, when we talked about that, John, at the time, the thought was that, that John Landis possibly could have been renovated for our needs through a capital improvement project, or something like that. And so, part of the process there in theme three is to do some of this work to be able to inform the city that, okay, in 2025, we need to have X, Y built, and it's gonna be this much money, so where, where is the money gonna come from, and help us find it, type of thing? So there's no, no plan like what you're talking about right now, and there needs to be. And so that is what theme three would be in part addressing.
It was theme three I was reacting to, yeah.
So one, for example, we, we renovated the Civic Center Library in 2010, 2011.
Yep.
So if you figure that the life expectancy of the carpet, let's just say, for the fun of it, is 10 years. In 2021, we should be starting to think about replacing carpet. Or, for example, we did the branch in 2014. So 10 years is 2024. Do we replace the carpet at the Mission Branch again in 2024? Or do we look for another space? And so, that's what this theme three is gonna address, is all, is all of those things. Does it mean that we're gonna have a new place in 2023? Not necessarily, but we could at least be lined up.
Absolutely.
So that's, that's our thought, and, and that we're taking certain themes in a direction
Yeah.
that they need to go.
You know, that was my point, because in the past, we've talked and talked, and then there always seems to be something that stops the next step.
Yeah, it's called money.
Well, yes.
But I think when you begin to see, I know we've now had this horrible period of time, but if we come back, when you begin to see how there were ti, there were months when the activity at the Mission Branch, I'll just use this as an example. The activity at the Mission Branch was almost the same as what was going on here at Civic Center, and it's like, wow. So, that kind of data, though, is what we need to look at when you begin to say, well, should, in 20, should, in 2024, should we be thinking about having money available for rugs? When the rugs are not gonna help
The capacity.
adjust, adjust to what the needs are coming through the door. You know, which means we need more space. Yeah, so, that's, all of that information needs to be considered and looked at
Exactly.
in that regard. Yes, I'm sorry.
I have a question on theme one. If you look at the objective, um, number two, what is the Community Information Exchange San Diego? Is that an online resource, is that printed material, or is that a hub?
So, um, Community Information Exchange of San Diego, or CIE, as we've started calling it, is, it is an online resource tool similar to, and connected to the, the 211 network. And what it does is, um, as you work with community people that have need, whether it's, they need a meal voucher, or a ride, or whatever, you can actually add them to this resource list, and it, and then it actually sees, you know, were we successful in helping this person? So it, it's, it takes it one step further than just handing someone a meal ticket. It's helping them solve the reason that they needed the meal ticket, and to see what the outcome is. So, the City of Chula Vista is a partner in this right now. We want to join it as a library, not only for what, how it's going to benefit the community and get involved in this, but it's also a great place then to have our Reed's Learning Center be one of their resources. So that, say, someone's at another library or somewhere, and it's revealed that they really could use some help with learning to read, or whatever their need might be. The person that's helping them might say, well, did you know about the Reed's Learning Center? Can I go ahead and share your information with them? Someone will contact you. So it's, it, we want to, we don't wanna just be providing the resources, we want, to people, we wanna be a resource as well. So, it's our, it's our getting involved in that.
So, you're not, uh, so the librarians don't have to be proficient as social workers?
Correct.
Okay, so it's just, they're familiar with what's out in the community? I like the idea of contacting the, the agency with this person's information, because the follow-up, I think, is better that way. I, I mean, there's so many nonprofit agencies out there that do so much work, and, you know, homelessness is a big deal, and as far as resources in the community, there's a little bit. But we all know that that problem is not gonna be solved by a bus voucher, or a meal ticket immediately. So, um, that one will be a hard nut. But I like, I really like the outreach on health, like dental services and things like that. Would one of the partners be Vista Community Clinic, or something? Okay.
Are you getting a nod from CJ, that yes?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I looked over your shoulder. Yeah, it sounds awesome.
Yes.
I really like that.
Would, I'm just throwing this, organized efforts to advance, normalize, and operationalize racial equity, but we're talking about building this, strengthening the workforce. So, in terms of our internships that we are going to have by 2021, would that fall under this area? I started to read it somewhere else, and I thought, well, maybe not, because then it goes into facilities.
So, the way that I have been looking at those three objectives, number one is working with our current, our current staff that, that we have in place, so, and making sure that they have an understanding of, um, providing services to anyone that walks in the door. And then, for us to begin that conversation with our HR department, and even within the library of, okay, so how do we, how do we get from, how do we get a librarian one that reflects the community diversity or makeup? And, so, but, yes, I do believe that, that internships are going to be a piece of this. And in fact, CJ and I were talking today, you know, when we originally signed, signed up through the online internship program at Cal State San Marcos, we, we made it a very broad request, and that you could, you know, be involved in one of these three areas. Since then, Monica has, is actually putting together a job description. She's looking for someone to specifically come and help with this CREEE work. And so, what we've been thinking about and considering is, maybe we, maybe we need to come up with the project, or the, the idea, and then go look for the intern that could come and
Fill that spot.
fill that spot, and learn the Oceanside way to do things in, in the process of it, so.
So, specifically with respect to the internship, that's what I've been speaking with her about.
Yes.
And I already had spoken with the president in another setting, two months, maybe, two months ago, saying, knowing that this racial equity thrust was coming, was coming, that that was really where we wanted to go with the internship program. So, there was a, the possibility of being able to go more directly to at least two or three sub-units in Cal State University, without going, like, to just the general internship coordinator to go to the Hispanic Center.
Yes.
The Black Student Center.
Yes.
So, they're, they're ready. That's all I'm saying. We just need to do this part that I'm working with.
The Native American, too.
A Native American, yeah. All, but I'm just saying, so they, all three of them, there are three, three centers. One is an all-encom, more encompassing, too. But, so that, they kinda said, yes, that will be fine. Let's go directly to them and see if there are students that, they are dealing with the students, not just the office of, you know, internship. Dealing with the students, get that message out. So, I'm working with
With worker bees.
Yeah, with her about that. For that very reason. I just wanted to know, where did you see this falling with respect to these, the goals or the themes?
Most likely, it would be definitely there. You know, we might, there may be able, that there's an intern that would come and help us with any one of these themes, depending on something's very specific that we needed someone to do. Analyzing statistics, any, any number of things.
Oh, yeah, in terms of having them.
Yes.
I'm just saying, where would the concept of an internship, you know,
So the, the concept of internship is part of our current strategic plan.
Right.
It's a desire of ours to, to see, to have a success with that.
I know.
So it's not going away. So it'll either be written into one of these as an action, or we just know that that is a core service that we wanna offer, that we have, we're not quite there yet, but we'll get there.
So, in that regard, for me, and I'm just, I'm not, I'm only one, I, I'm not at a point of just saying, we approve this, it's a draft. I think there's a lot of wonderful things here. For me, I'd like to take it in more, and I think if the next meeting, you're gonna be having something more, that's more formal, finalized, rather, I'm saying, you said November, is this Octo, where, where are we? October?
Yes.
In November, you'll be coming forward with, I would like to say, a consensus to move forward.
Yeah.
But I'm not ready to say, we approve this, because this is not, this is just a draft. I'm just, do you understand what I'm saying? Does that make sense?
So, what we would, what our plan was, and what we would be bringing you in November, would include the introduction, would include a process, would make this, like, look nicer than it is. And then, but this would be our plan. And then, what we would be bringing to you in January, then would be the first year action goals, or action items.
So November would not be any action plans?
No.
Draft, no draft action plans in November?
Do you think?
Probably not.
Yeah. Because the other thing is, and we, our, our plan would be to take the strategic plan to the council in January. And, but, but once we had-
But the council meeting is before our meeting.
Pardon me?
The council meeting would be before our meeting in January.
Most likely.
I, I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry, if you did.
I think she's just making a statement, that
Oh, I see, okay.
That if we wanna take it to council in January, it most likely would be before you would be meeting in January.
Uh-huh.
So.
Yeah.
If it needs-
And we don't meet in December.
If it-
At a special meeting, okay. Which we could have, but-
So what I need, so what I need to know from you today, is there anything here that you're, like, totally opposed to? So I'm seeing no?
No, I'm not opposed, but I think you're gonna probably have to schedule a remedial meeting with me, Sheri, because my gender requires me to look at things in terms of spatial relationships. And as I was saying to you earlier, I'm having some difficulty in connecting the four themes with the four verbs that have been part of your mission statement, because each page of this is about engage, inform, connect, and inspire.
Right, yeah.
And so I'm having trouble translating that into these four themes. I love the four themes, but I'm just wondering how, how you're gonna draw, draw the lines there? Maybe for those of us who are hindered in our learning styles.
I, I would just like to say, I don't think it's gender-related. I think it's time-related. Where, as I looked over all this information, and really spent a lot of time on that other thick body of work we just went through.
Yep.
When I got to this, I went, but I, right away, I said, oh, the mission is engage, inform, connect, and inspire.
Right.
And so when I looked at what was here, I was trying to take each one of these in context with that. I'm not saying that I am opposed to anything that's here, but I'm trying to take it in. I'm trying to visualize, and maybe that's more than what we are supposed to do. I don't know, but that's where I was.
Just help us to connect the dots, if you can, if that's possible.
Yeah. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
The themes are great, though.
Yeah.
So the, so in, if, if I was starting to put this together in a brochure to hand out, the themes would be taking the place of those action words of engaging, informing, connecting, and inspiring.
The themes would be taking the place, or if we were gonna connect the dots, it would be the theme one, just like you did with your city goals. Theme one connects to mission and connect. Theme two connects with inspire and, but, whatever. That's where I was trying to
Okay.
go, that's where I'm going.
And, and we had that discussion as a management team, and the reason it's not showing up here is because that's not, that wasn't the way that their thought processes were working. And like I said, I think, I think we're making, we're making a little bit of a shift of, we know what our mission is. And, and there, we should be seeing an action within each one of these themes and goals that speaks to those four pieces of our mission. And I think we will see that.
No, I, I'm not really doubting that. I'm not, like, doubting it, I'm just, I was trying to make the connection between-
Okay. Okay.
those themes, what I'm reading under it in terms of objectives and connecting it to, that was my first thing. And then it was the first thing off the top of the review. So
So what can I, what
I would leave it to what you'd like to do.
What can I bring back to you in November that's going to help you get where you need to be?
Connect the dots. For me, it would be connect the dots.
Either that or change your organizational pattern to these four themes instead of the four verbs that we used in this, this, this previous plan.
So with that, we're approving then it to take, go to the next step, finalize it?
Okay.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Motion?
No, I don't think we need a motion.
Are we approving it to go to the next step?
I think what we've said is that we need to take the next step and, and, and then we vote.
Okay.
So the dilemma then becomes, how do you put this into the minutes?
Well, no. So I'm saying that if we don't, we could say there's a consensus for it to go forward. We'd like to have the, the next version of it to include the connectivity with the mission. And, and knowing that you need to have something for the city council before January, if it requires that we have a separate meeting to take that step, we can do that, if we have to.
That's true. We can.
If I need to wait to take it to council in February, I am fine with that.
Okay.
We need to have a plan that works for all of us.
I appreciate that.
So can I ask, are you, are you good with, are you happy with the, with what is written here?
Yes.
I'm happy with the objectives. And I don't know, maybe it's because the actions we're not seeing there yet, it doesn't feel full yet, and we won't see that. And that's the reason why I'm saying, for me, if you could connect it, whatever the thinking is, which you all have, connect the dots for me, coming back at the next meeting.
Can I share what I have?
Okay.
And see if it suits what, what I think I'm hearing. I said, the board asked for clarity on how the proposed themes relate to the library's mission of engage, inform, connect, and inspire. Staff will bring a revised document to the board for approval in November, and plans to present the action steps for approval by the city council in January. Does that sound?
Yes.
Is that what you guys want to do?
I think perhaps you might say, and may present in January, not will.
Okay.
In case we aren't there yet.
Plans.
Plans, yeah.
I said plans. I didn't say you will.
And I will, and I will say again, it is, it is, if we really feel, and I would like to start, I'd like to have city council look at it, have it something in hand in January. And if that just means that we need to do a tweak, a small tweak, we can have a, a separate meeting in December, even though we wouldn't. We can call a meeting if we need to.
Yes.
We can do that under the Brown Act.
We figured it out. There you go.
Okay, Paula.
Wondering if the board may be just making this a bit too complicated?
No.
You know, I
I don't think so.
This is a strategic plan that we're working on right now, or the library is working on right now. It, it's easy for me to connect the dots with the mission statement or whatever. I, I don't know. It just seems that there's, when people read this, maybe their minds don't work the way that yours do. Mine certainly doesn't. I don't, it just seems it's overcomplicated. And that I really like this draft of the strategic plan. It makes a lot of sense to me. I think that the objectives are laid up clearly. And just as a whole, it seems to me that this is certainly in line with the library's mission. It's, so I am not an administrator. I'm not a government or civic type person. But anyway, I just wanted to put my two cents in.
Appreciate that.
I like it the way it is.
It's fine. Okay, so how will we proceed? We have one person, we have four of us that
I think this makes sense. I can see where you're a little confused with the past work. I think it, I think they can come up with some introductory paragraph or so to be overlaid on top of this that will make this seem more, more sense. And, and I'm not, there are occasions when I'm not sure I really fully understand what the word theme means. And maybe that needs to be, the what's, the themes that need to be connected to the engage, the connect and all that. But I like this work. So I don't want to throw the baby out with the bath.
I think that's the message, Sherri, is that we like the four themes. And I'm personally, like with Adrienne, confident that your management team, and especially with CJ being here to hear some of our concerns about that linkage. I'm sure you guys can wrestle with it and come up with something.
I think so.
Certainly you have affirmation from all of us that the content looks good.
I, I'm not, please, I'm not saying throw any of this out.
Okay.
The point is, you've answered my question. You said that the staff talked about them with respect to the mission. I'm asking, would you just please make it clear?
Okay.
That's all. Connect the dots. That was my thought.
So then are you able to approve this in concept or in its draft form?
Yes.
So that we can continue with our work?
Yes, absolutely.
So you need a motion, is what I'm hearing. Okay.
Who read?
That's not the motion.
Do you want to read that again? Or did you, sorry, Sherri?
That was an action.
Okay.
That, what I read to you would have been the action that you requested. The motion could be to approve the draft and themes, goals, and objectives as presented. But you, you have that action there also. Do you want to change it to?
And, and, no, I think that, that is fine. And I think, and to, and to make a, a stronger connection in whatever way you see
Board made a recommendation to me.
With the mission.
Okay.
Okay, now I don't see why you need a motion now. You would want, you would want to
That's what I was saying.
Do that next, next month then.
I'm just, I'm just, so I think I have what I need, if you're not feeling like an emotion, a motion and approval of something is what needs to be done. I just need to know that we are on the right track and that we should put effort and energy into finishing this up.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
We could recommend that you proceed with this. That does not recommend, that does not accept it in totality.
Yeah, it's, it's, I don't think you generally approve a draft. It's generally the finished product that you approve. And so that we could be, instead of approval, it should have been review.
Okay.
And I was
And get direction from the board.
Yep.
Yeah, my feeling was move forward. Consensus is, it looks good. And I think if we said, if we could just make some strong connection, make sure the mission is there.
Okay.
That's it. Okay? Consensus.
Comfort level, I want you to know, and I didn't include this for you, we already have a full page of action items.
I kind of felt you did, but I don't know.
We, we would be ready
Yeah.
To go with that.
That's why I'm saying, I would like to in January. I'd love it to go forward in January. I'm not wanting to hold it back.
I think we have clarity, don't we?
Yes.
Okay, so are we good now, Sherri, in terms of, Sherri, no, are we good in terms of the language that you need? All right. Okay, very good. Thank you. Good discussion. Hey, listen, here's what it is. Okay, number seven. Are we, oh, ooh, I'm hungry. Funding for lunch.
I moved for approval of, of, of accepting the funds.
To approve.
I moved for approval to take the, take the money and run.
Exactly.
Thank you. My gosh, isn't that wonderful?
Yes.
Removed and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Wow, absolutely. Ann, number eight? We have funds for crisis collection funds. Wonderful. Library demands for electronic resources.
Second.
Removed and seconded, any in favor?
I have, I have a question. Is this going to pay the city for the television of these meetings?
No.
Oh.
For the what? Oh.
Somebody said something about there would be some funding coming from the state.
It's, yeah, that's being handled
Okay.
In, in another way. Yes.
Yeah. Okay, and now we are at? Yes, and I thought we, at three o'clock, I thought we were going to be out of here in 15 minutes. All right, we are
Did you, did you take a vote on
No.
This one? We had a motion and a second.
Moved and seconded, thank you, that we accept the funds, the crisis collection funds.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
There, we did it.
Oh, gosh. All right, information. Sherri, I guess, looks like you're the one.
Yes, so, so during, during this COVID time, you, you have not been attending the Friends meetings, which is fine. And I'll just give you a very brief update. So they met again via Zoom on October the 13th. Things functioned well. There was not a treasurer's report. She wasn't available to be at the meeting. They have researched and approved the purchase of a new membership database that has some functionality to it that is going to help them now and in the future. So we are excited about that and looking forward to helping them with that implementation. They continue to look for a new book sorting and storage facility, and they had a few leads that they were going to, different members were going to reach out. They've put together several really creative fundraising ideas, and I'm assuming that you all received the tea campaign.
Yeah, that was clever.
The little tea bag. Well, I want you to know that that has, as of yesterday, raised $6,115.
Very good.
So, and I asked Sherri, I said, okay, has that been like five people and they wrote big checks? And so there's been, there was a $1,000 donation and a $500 donation, but the rest of it has been, you know, someone get, you know, many people giving 100 or 50 or something like that. So it, it was very, a very clever idea. It was nicely put together. And one of these days, I'm going to enjoy my cup of tea.
I know.
Haven't quite got there yet. And then they're planning a GoFundMe campaign for some time later in November that could, you know, reach a completely different audience or whatever. So they're doing a great job in that regard. One of their newer members, Joe McCluskey, he took on the responsibility as the public relations chair. He's put together a business membership campaign and will be going out to, to different businesses. They've gotten, they've purchased some window clings. So if a business takes on a sponsorship of the Friends, then they would have a Friends window cling in their, in their window.
That's great.
And then they made some, they voted to make some changes to their bylaws. Instead of audits moving forward, they would do financial reviews. Membership, they are splitting organization and business into two separate categories to allow for this business membership Language to also allow the board to approve like a, a short-term fundraising campaign. If you remember a couple of years ago, during Friends of the Library Week, they did like a 50/50, or they did a buy one, get one free. So you buy your membership, get a membership for a friend. So that was a special campaign. The board should be able to just approve that for a short-term period and not have it mess with their, their bylaws and their standard membership levels. And so they will be bringing that at their annual meeting. Per their bylaws, it has to be voted on by the general membership. So the board's approved, and then in their February meeting, it would be approved by the general membership. And then they're starting to think about the fact that the Friends of the Library will be 50 years old in 2021. So they are planning some, hopefully some programming and some other things that, that they want to do during that time. So there was good energy and things got accomplished at the meeting. So it was very good.
Good, yeah.
Great. And then the other is?
Yes, I wanted to tell everyone that we got, we, the foundation, got a very nice check from Mr. Cheadle. And I think most of you remember that his wife, Jane, is, helped start the foundation. And he's active in the community, and I wanted to tell you that. If you see him, be sure to tell him thank you. Because he's still a very staunch supporter for us.
Do you want to say what the amount was, or, did you say you received a check?
A check for the foundation.
Yes.
Do you want to tell the dollar amount?
If you want to.
$750.
Great, wonderful.
Oh, that's what Trump paid in taxes.
He's just
Don't put that in the minutes.
He's such a dear.
He is. He's a very sweet man.
To be aware of it.
Yes. That's great. Very good. Okay, and Sherri, Sarah?
Sarah, so we met via Zoom on October the 15th. Financially, we, Sarah is doing fine. There was some discussion about creating a reserve policy
Wow.
so that we could always make sure that, you know, we have money on hand to cover things that we need. We're asking the state library for some information on forecasting, on what they think future budgets would look like in order to kind of inform us in this area.
We have to stop burning down the state. We have to stop burning down the state first.
Oh, true. So there will be some updates. We updated the website policy, and one of the committees that is called STARC, we have all these interesting initials, but it's the Sarah Technology Review Committee. And Sam Liston is actually the chair now for the next year, which then makes me the liaison and, and all that. But, so they're going to take on the work of updating the Sarah website. So
And it's called what? Stark?
Stark.
Stark.
Yes. We also biennially have to review our conflict of interest code. And we did that two years ago, and we reviewed it, and we're not making any changes. And then at our February meeting, we have put an item on the agenda to consider changing the name of the cooperative, something that will reflect the region a little bit better. So, to be determined.
You don't like the name?
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Well, Sarah, I mean, the word, I mean, Sarah, it doesn't mean anything, or it, it reflects on Father Sarah. And so I, I think we, you know, most of the other cooperatives do something that reflects the region that the cooperative covers. So we need to consider even if it's something as simple as San Diego and Imperial County or something like that. So that's my report.
Great, thank you. Okay, director's report.
Okay, so in your packet, I did, there's an infographic there that says, Oceanside Public Library Annual Report 20 that says Oceanside Public Library Annual Report 2020. So every year, we fill out a report for the State Library on our activities. And this year, when we turned in all that hard work, this infographic popped up. So Sherri was all excited. She coordinates and inputs all the data for us on that. And she sent it to me, and she goes, look at what they gave us. So it's kind, it's kind of nice to see. So this is reflecting what happened in fiscal year 1920. So unfortunately, our closure during COVID is captured in part of this. But I still thought that it was just a nice reflection of our hard work. So I wanted to include that for you.
I thought it was great. And the only thing I looked for that I thought was missing, because we've been so proud, the number of grants that.
They don't ask us about that. So that's why it's not.
Oh.
I mean, it's captured as a, it's captured as a dollar amount in our, you know, our revenue and expenditures, but it's not something that's pulled out specifically. So, yeah.
But we do really well. Yeah, you could send it in anyway.
Absolutely. And I can report it to you anyhow, so.
He had a long discussion about that, partially when we started the foundation. Do you tell how much money you've gotten? Or will that discourage anybody from giving more?
I know.
Because you're already getting it.
And I didn't say number. I didn't say amount of money. I said the number.
The number of donors, the number of whatever.
You have to really be careful. We talked about that a lot.
But even the number of grants, and then, so it does get reflected in programs.
You're right, that would work.
Yeah. Anyways, it was wonderful to see it.
Okay.
It was, it was superb.
And then just to update you on the Story Corner refresh and the Hub project, the designer is on board. We've had several walkthrough meetings with her. She's given us some design concepts to consider. And we will be meeting as a senior management team on Monday in the space to kind of think through the space and give some feedback back to her about that. So that project continues to move forward. Our work with the Cultivating Racial Equity and Inclusion, that team of Monica, Jorge, Erin, Jenna, Lisa, and Brad, they have been meeting every week. They are using a toolkit that they learned how to use in their training to evaluate different programming and programs and services within the library. They have started in the area of outreach of who are we reaching? Who aren't we reaching? They are looking at that in relationship to people with library cards and their racial makeup versus the census tracking and discovering where like unreached communities are within the city of Oceanside.
Good.
And so they are working on that. They're looking to write a grant, a competitive grant through the state of California that could help them with some of this work in that area to help us get to that community. And they're looking at bringing on an intern from Cal State San Marcos to help them. And then they will be also going back and reviewing and modifying their action plan a little bit, because I've asked them to include their, in their action work to figure out the best way so that we can kind of, so that we can figure out the racial makeup of our staff. And so they will add that to their action plan. And when that is done, then I, you know, I will be able to share that. We have done round one of the book clubs. And then we have a second round of that happening, which will be quite a bit of our staff that had been furloughed. They hadn't had a chance to choose a book or be part of a book club. So that second round will be happening as well. And then I'm sure that they will be doing some reflection on how that went and how the, and what came out of those book clubs. The focus, when we're able to have Staff Development Day again, will be around this create work. So that's my report on that. I also wanted to let you know that we have successfully completed the Setup to Succeed grant with the Oceanside Unified School District. We've turned in our final report, and all is well with that. And then thanks to Trustee Loftus, we've been able to make some connections within the Vista Unified School District to possibly start that same program with them. He helped to get the right people at the table, which was very nice. And they're very enthusiastic about that. And so we've now, he and I and the superintendent have stepped out of the picture. And the two, two staff with the school district, Emery Town and their IT and our IT people are moving forward with it. So we made, he made the connection. We had a great first meeting. And so we will move forward with that. Their next meeting as a group will be to decide, you know, do we wait till next school year or wait till? It's most successful if the students are, at least the K-5 kids, if they're actually in the classroom. It's most successful, because it's easier to get them their physical cards, different things like that. And so we may be looking at next school year, but we will work through that in the next couple of months and then look for the funding that we need to purchase the cards.
So the one, Oceanside Unified School District, K through 5, that's already started?
It's completed, yes.
Completed.
So just to let you know, every child, K through 12th grade, have library cards.
Right.
K through 5 actually have physical cards. The middle school and the high school kids, because they're accustomed to using their student ID, that has become their library card. Or if they already had an Oceanside library card, that still continues to work. Then I think it's on a, either quarterly or semi-annual basis, the school district gives us an update of any new students, and then we add them. So it's, it's an ongoing program with the Oceanside School District.
That's great.
Sherri, if I could just add for Deputy Mayor Fellers that our initial thrust was to have all children who live in the city of Oceanside but attend the Vista Unified School District to get library cards to the Oceanside library. But as the conversation proceeded, they're now talking about possibly all of the students in Vista Unified School District getting access. And whether or not that becomes a reality, I think both Sherri and I were pleased with their positive response, saying, well, let's go further. And there's nothing wrong with a Vista resident having an Oceanside library card.
That's great.
It's good news.
I applaud that. I think I mentioned that at an earlier point, just because a third of the city is taken up by.
And that's why I mentioned it. Because I, I think I had heard you say at one point, that was one of your personal goals.
Right.
And there are three other school districts in the city of Oceanside as well. But that's Carl's bad.
And they're on our radar as well. So we're getting there.
Well, I wanted to ask you what the Vista Library thought about all this.
I haven't talked to them yet, but I will. I will talk with, once the decision is made, how broad we're taking this, I will speak with the San Diego County Library Director and let him know what we're doing.
Sherri did ask Paula about the outreach on the part of the Vista Library to the school district. And the superintendent shared that they got some flyers from them, so.
I might add that we, you know, we need to protect the residents of Oceanside no matter what school they're in.
Right.
And there are charter schools as well.
Yeah.
Classical coastal.
Right.
Pacific View. So those all should be in part of it.
Yeah, it's nothing to do with one being better or different than the others, that we have this oddity in terms of a city that crossing these different lines, you know?
That conversation has come up with Proposition W, because there's a lot of folks who live in the Vista Unified School District who have the opportunity to vote yes or no on Proposition W. And then there are other residents of the Vista Unified School District, because they don't live in the city of Vista. They're wondering why W wasn't on their ballot.
Yeah, I know. And then in terms of us, where we are in Oceanside, we can't vote for the Oceanside School District. We vote for Vista.
Right.
Yeah, no, I think it's very appropriate to be going down this path.
I don't understand what you said there, Bill.
Well, the school district boundaries precede the creation of the cities. You know, in other words, in the beginning of time, the state of California was divided up into X number of school districts. At that time, some cities didn't exist.
Well, I'm just saying that people in Oceanside, there are places where they don't, just as the chair said, she doesn't get Prop W out there. There's no tax on her. The only one that gets the tax is residents of this Oceanside Unified School District.
Right.
College Boulevard, you're on.
Sorry, Sherri, we didn't mean to take you sideways.
That's all right.
It's all right, yeah.
Where I didn't have to talk.
In my circle, because we live on a circle, there were four children that are going to private schools. So I made sure they all got our library cards.
Right.
And, and, you know, and then they in turn had buddies or whatever to get, because it suddenly dawned on me, and I was very slow thinking about it. But, you know, these kids didn't have library cards because they, they live right in the middle of the city.
Okay. So I just wanted to share, you know, the, both the Civic Center and the Mission Branch Library are mail ballot drop-off locations. As of the 24th of October, the branch has had 4,462 ballots turned in at their location. And Civic Center here has had 1,960.
Wow.
So the branch is a very popular place to drop off the ballot.
Wow.
And then just on the facilities front, I wanted to let you know that Reed successfully moved into their space.
And the address, is it 805?
804.
It's four, oh, okay.
804, Peer View.
Yes.
So they were successfully there by October 16th. They're working now on connectivity and other things. And the plan would be to have some kind of reopening set for January, and I'll keep you informed on that. And with, with the size of the space and the individual-type classrooms, we're hoping that maybe there might be a little bit of returning to some in-person service, but we will keep you posted on that as well. But if they haven't been able to open for in-person service, I'll at least make sure that after, that we put some time in at our January meeting that maybe we can have a little tour after or something.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
And then staffing and staffing and staff development and training, all of those other things were in your packet. And if you have questions, feel free to ask me.
Interns all listed?
Yes.
I had a couple of questions. I was curious on, how many employees are we down?
Um, one, two, three, four, five.
These are all just one person?
Seven.
It hasn't put a hardship on the.
Well, our hours are limited.
Yeah.
You know, if we were, if we were open, full force, we would be in trouble.
Then you would be in trouble, right. And there's still people in the community that don't know we're open. I told somebody in my building today, and they, oh, I didn't know that, so.
Yeah. Yeah, if we were, if we were trying to meet our pre-COVID schedule, we would definitely be.
Yeah, okay.
In a hard place.
And then the other question I had was, have you heard anything about what the people learned? You had a large group that were doing the Cultivating Racial Equality and Inclusion online book discussion?
So those were our three book clubs that we had. And so one of, one of the things that, kind of, one of the ground rules of book club is what is said in book club stays in book club. So I will get Monica, I will get the facilitators to, you know, maybe give a little bit of a high-level synopsis of it, but.
That's what I'm, having listened to my daughter, who works for Cox, do the discussion with, and she's leading the group on racial equality. And they're sharing personal stories. So I think it's having an impact on people. And I was just curious as to whether people were having, having a meaningful conversation, I guess, is what I'm after.
So I can say that the one that I participated in, yes, we did have some meaningful conversations. And I'm assuming the same has happened with the others. I would say that from, from our discussion and for myself personally, as I read the book that I did, I definitely feel like we're on, on the right track to have these conversations and that there's, you know, there's, there's work to be done, even if it's just in the area of being more aware.
Right.
And that, you know, sometimes we might, it may not even be anything that we say or do. It could be a case of the fact that we didn't say or do something.
Yes.
So, you know, it's, book, reading a book should make you think, even if it's.
That's what I was doing like this.
A junky paperback.
You're saying that I was doing like this.
Yeah, exactly.
Think.
Yes, so.
Some of those sometimes make you think more than.
But I will, you know, I do believe that part of their process would be to do some evaluation on how this worked or didn't work and what, and what came out of it. And as time permits and whatever is appropriate, I will make sure that it gets shared with you.
I was excited to see that that many participated, so.
Yeah, that was a.
Everybody's not reading the same books, though, right? Yeah, they're just, yeah, there's, I know there are a number of books that were identified.
There were three books, yes.
Right. Great. No, very needed. It's great. Thank you.
Believe it or not, I have nothing more to say today.
Wow. And the public relations, very nice. All right, anything else from city council, board members, anybody? Say more?
I hate to talk. I'm on, I'll be on overtime here pretty quick. And the city doesn't like to pay overtime, so. The, I want to apologize to Monica and the forum that was put on. I don't remember when it was, but for the life of me, I could not get connected. And, and I just, I don't have a computer at home, so it's, and I was not able to be in the, in the building, so. Somehow I didn't get connected. And so I apologize for all the effort she made to try to help me, but it didn't work, so. Let her know, please.
Okay, anything else? Hearing none, I think we stand adjourned.